Davis. Sorry, four after six, we're gonna get started with respect to everybody's time tonight. We're ready to rock and roll. That's right. Then in that case, it is six oh five at the call this regular city council meeting. Tuesday, January the third of hell, that's we go the long time. That's the minutes. January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. All calls.
Councillor Laitz, here. Councillor Hill.
President.
Councillor Lillanay.
Here.
Councillor Greens. I've sent Councillor Progenty.
President.
Mayor Proten Green.
Here.
And Mayor Levin.
Here. Thank you very much. This time I would ask for approval of agendas. Anything we'd like to change on the agenda? Hearing that, I will be paying motion to approve the agenda.
This is second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you. All in favor. Housekeeping matters. First, please start.
Right. So we had a lovely meeting today in the homelessness coalition. We're gonna be doing the council. I passed all the council members a page. That's gonna look like it's basically a homelessness town going through two days, one Monday, short day, January twenty-fourth through twenty-fifth. Point in time help, and it gives us the ability to use as a resource to potentially find grant funding for homelessness and other such issues in the county. So any help is greatly appreciated if any members of the public are interested and would happy to give you one of these. Essentially, through that homelessness coalition, we also spoke a little bit about what the future goals are, and I kind of wanted to update everyone and where we're sitting with that. We're moving fastly, hopefully within this next month, where we have kind of a good idea of what the homelessness is gonna, coalition is gonna do its work. And which includes our mission, which is that homelessness here is short and brief as the mission statement. Basically, we're just gonna try in every way to prevent it and in every way that we can to make sure that long term there is housing suitable for people. And it's a housing first direction that we're taking, and we're making sure that people are housed and have a place to live as the solution for homelessness, not a shelter where we spend millions of dollars that go down the drain essentially. So if anyone's interested in those topics or has any other questions for it, I'm more than happy to answer them or invite you to the meetings.
Thank you. I did attend the meeting today. I've been to some in the past. I missed one before that, but I would say the homeless issue is so complex. And I've wondered, can we really get this done? That I want some leadership around the table in existence community, and I, I think we can do that. So I was really encouraged.
We're very hopeful that we'll be able to flex any type of resource in and out of the county and state federal resources as much as we can to be able to make this a reality in our community.
Okay. We're the housekeeping matters.
I have one, Mayor.
Please.
I present the mineral belt, and I don't know whose responsibility it is, but it is part of the city to do the job and things back and about that. And it is greatly appreciated. There's actually a lot of waste on the mineral belt.
I don't think the city does that, but I'm not upset. Yes.
And this was discussed when I came on. It was mentioned that the Mineral Belt Trail Committee was going to do that. But that was about a year or two ago.
Who was the trash?
The county.
I suppose the county. Just find something. Maybe it's in the city. It's coming.
I've got a couple of quick things. I just want to talk about some of the great events this last week. The one time we flash off the nonprofit fair. It was just bad news. Seeing all the nonprofits in this community and all the good work they're doing, see them all together and and really enjoying each other's company for one thing, but also kind of looking through volunteers and they had a nice big turnout there. I was in that for a while. Also, everybody who could get to party calls, that was quite a party. And a big fundraisers, they pulled out tickets to party ball and they had silent auction and so it was good support. Our community is so much better this time. Last thing I'll say is I've talked to this at St. George about food access. They're really worried. I'm going to encourage her to come talk to city council, and I'm not sure exactly what she's gonna want, but I suspect they're talking about a financial shortfall this year and I'd least encourage her to come and have that conversation with us and, you know, so. Anybody else on housekeeping? Okay. Thank you much. At this time, we would love to hear from our public. If there's anybody in the public who would like to make comments to city council, I was not on the agenda. Please introduce yourself and you have three minutes. Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Next up, the consent agendas, the approval of minutes of January third, twenty twenty-three.
Most.
Roger, second.
I have a small title correction. Under six B should be partnership.
Yes.
One last seconds.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any votes? Any objections? Thank you. Now, change the list. Would you repeat that, Jersey?
You got it, didn't you? Or she got it?
She got it. Okay. In which case, I would entertain most of my line.
I was not present at this meeting. I was the first person.
On the ground for January fifth?
Yes. Was this president or the vote fall? Not president in that meeting?
Okay. Thank you. Did you capture that change in the?
Yes.
I'm gonna take motion to approve what's with changes.
Member Jancy.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you. All in favor. At this time, we have presentations and we are delighted to hear that council with Steve Jordan. Giddy up.
Giddy up. One time this year, I'm that first time following the show. That's a couple of stickers up there. Somebody doesn't have one, please fill three of them. So March fourth, seventy-fifth, let us teach our leaders, thank you for doing it again.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks a bunch. First foremost, thank you again, city council, street department, city of Leadville, fire department, police department. Lake County, it's, in my opinion, after a number of years doing this, the greatest opportunity to see our entire community come together for a common wild west cause, and that feels good. So thank you. I don't know if you have a chance to see the altitude broadcasts yet of the event, but that's, that's kind of neat. Such as DVRs, there's probably four or five airings left. It's already aired four or five times. But seeing commercials about the city of Leadville and Lake County and Ski Cooper and the High Mountain Institute and the Colorado Mountain College, as well as other facets of our community on the altitude network is cool. That's why we've been doing the broadcast. I think we're gonna do it again. So part of the reason I'm here is to request reimbursement per last year for last year's broadcast of six thousand dollars. I promise that if you have my word, that if there, for some reason, there's a chance that we don't do it, we will absolutely give that money back to city council, to the city of Leadville, doing an attempt to keep that. The Wrangler, we're gonna sign up for it again this year, and they're talking about doing a short kind of documentary, if you will, in the last seventy-five years, still growing some legs. Talking to Jeremiah Random, we made a base of a couple of hundred dollars in costs this year. The St. Vincent's Foundation paid for the additional ambulatory service. We want to have it on site. We understand that if it's one ambulance in this community or two ambulance in this community, there are other emergencies that we can flip into a nine-one-one call, you know, status level, same as if somebody were to have a heart attack in their own home, and that works for us. Planning to have Wesley Harrison, status quo, she's our equine veterinarian, comes up from Naperville. We'll see what Dr. Dennis Lindemeyer is capable to do, is why it remains his primary focus, I think, these days. So we'll have him on standby likely. I don't think we'll require it down the avenue. And nearly everything else, planning to be exactly the same. So I kind of came tonight. We're in the second year of a three-year permit. But I always volunteer to come because it's good to see you guys and say thank you. You're a big reason why we get to continue in this tradition here and see if there's any questions.
We're gonna have any questions?
I shouldn't make it easy.
Yeah, we're gonna be off the hook.
Yeah. And if there are any questions or if any new faces in here that don't know me or how this all goes down, my whole number, we have little posters, it's on the lead of ski journey dot com website, Facebook page. If you ever have any questions, suggestions, or if ever you see something, part of the reason I come is was there anything from last year that didn't go great before, during, or after? Kind of remain very closely connected with the street department and road and bridges. That's kind of the big, the bigger moving parts.
Yeah, in terms of set up airs.
Yeah, that's just, just great. Welcome to your first year playing with me. You'll be fine with it, so. I think it would be, yeah, it'd be absolutely great. It's good that we got so recently to have them involved and so long to pass. Oh, I almost forgot too, our old friend Sarah. The Taylor Opera House Preservation Foundation is excited to have Bill link open during the ski journey twenty-three. We'll have live streaming of the action available with free hot drinks to the public to warm them up. The gift store will be open and we'll be playing Ice Cowboys, old documentary that he's done by Miller and Silverton, Red River, New Mexico. Cool program we got permission to use. In the theater, we'll guess take some tours on the main building. One day soon, we hope offer more of our facilities during ski journey for the local organizers. So we're still local to do either a movie. You know, the children's snowboard Miller film debuted, Leadville Ski Journey several years ago. I think that'd be a great option. Ultimately, someday we want to do a concert Saturday night, full on Wild Western Rock and Roll concert.
You and I talked this year, Friday night, we're gonna scare some jazz.
Yeah.
And, and Saturday morning is gonna be the snow machine race out of college.
Yeah, as well as I'd like to think that the Nordic knockout sprinters will be back down the avenue on Friday night. I think the snow hardens up. Mineral Belt Mayhem still plans to go out. I apologize. I don't know whether the, the paintball by Avalon and Ski Cooper events are going, but I'd like to pick there too. Town's nearly full on Saturday already. I'm struggling to find in-town lodging for competitors, special operatives. So get ready. I can tell you, if it's warm, it's gonna be huge, huge. That was big last season, huge. All right, cool.
Thank you, Devon.
Yeah, thanks again for the support.
Next up, we have Daryl Broadband, John Ward.
Hello. Thanks for having me again.
We're gonna get your presentation up in just one second, so.
Good. All right. Thank you for having me. I'll be brief. I know I spoke to you guys last year and at least with your company's slide really quickly and then next slide, please. Yeah, so just a little bit about rural broadband. We, uh, these serve mountain communities with fiber-based internet to the business and the home, and we also school district services as well. We are in eighteen states, eighty markets, and we have about ninety thousand customers. We've been in Leadville servicing the school district here since two thousand and eighteen, and we are also servicing the mail yard. Those loans go up and we're expanding and working in the past about twenty-three hundred homes and businesses in Leadville. Next page. What we're doing now, you know, is a couple of things. We focus on best-in-class quality of service. We're, we're local and we're fiber-based, reliable, and the speeds are good. What we're doing right now is doing a pre-registration or save your spot. Where I'll be doing like a free cookie giveaway at the Golden Borough on Thursday and just getting that information about how you can sign up if you're interested in our services and save your spot. We're not actually taking orders yet because we don't have taken orders for a home that's ninety days out. It's more like you register and then when we're coming down your street, we'll call you up and then we'll take your order and say we'll be here in two weeks or we'll schedule a date. And next slide. This is the slide that matters. This is the different phases. You can see there's a blue, a green, and orange, and red, and yellow. A lot of the blue is actually already built and we're gonna be ready to start to build drafts relatively soon. I need to rest a lot of my few beta customers in the cooler area. We wanna just do the trial install process with us. The yellow is being built and will be done rapidly, same with the green. We're hopefully telling everybody we'll start turning people up April first and that'll be the blue, yellow, and green zones. The white, the red, and the yellow will be, will follow up this summer in those zones. Questions?
When, when you say you're getting it ready, what does that mean? Are you still stringing fiber on poles or?
Yeah, so, so we've already in the blue area, we've already shrunk our fiber out of all the holes in all layouts. Now, there's one small section where we, we one street, it covers maybe ten rolls in a blue section that we couldn't get on the poles and we're, we're working through that. We might actually, actually have the parity. Just skip a couple of poles and then get back on them. So that, those twelve are going to, none of them will add up this summer. Basically, everything else is already passed. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna roll, do two truck rolls, if you will. So someone in the blue area calls us, can place an order, our truck will roll, and we'll do the drop where we come off the pole under the roof, just like the existing cable company comes and sending, coming, your other utilities come off the pole, through the roof, we'll drive our box on the outside of the house. And then that'll be truck roll number one and, and then truck number, roll number two. Be more coordinated with the, this far, or we actually come in, bring the fiber in at all and set up the wire. I rather turn your stuff at the top. Any questions to city council?
An areas where people go on an additional line starting up on their, someone pulled their house because we got a building that we're not here. With our underground service to the homes.
Uh, we, we'll. That's a good question. If the preferences come off the poles, because that's what's there. Any underground we are doing is where there isn't, or it's not here at all. It might be trouble that coming off a pole down the ground. I think we'll just get here, here too, the real sound. Shoot, that's a good question. I, I think it's a central circuit. I know we also use monolith as well, but it's achieved here as a central circuit.
So you're using this infrastructure?
It's using infrastructure to get from Denver to like it.
Yes.
And what we're, what we're working at is a second path from another vendor back to Denver. Right now, it's just one path and we're gonna have fewer voice.
Mine, just in case one gets knocked by a
Correct.
Something or other.
Yes.
Okay, and is that mostly aerial, uh, through century links existing and?
How, I mean, how, how is it, is it, is it just like the way that that fiber goes? However, the century links network comes into account, I imagine it's very once it comes down, maybe some holes, but I don't know that I, I can, I can find out. It'll answer this question.
Is, is part of your business model, um, you know, federal grant money for rural broadband?
Yes. So we've been working with the Colorado broadband office to buy the grant money over the state and see you as money. And we have submitted a letter to them, felt more interested in building sort of your style out of town. The lanes, this sort of hitting all the labor of this in a town. Skirts in town. We're still waiting on the Colorado broadband office to sort of robot. One of the next steps are actually applying for those grants. But definitely want to participate in that, and again, wanting to expand, expand the route.
I think that'd be great throughout my communities to have the same, same service potential. Last question will be, in any of the communities that you serve, do you enter into franchise agreements?
No. Yeah.
No.
Yeah, because we're providing TV services.
All right. Some other question?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, the city of history report.
Okay, great. Just give me one second here to pull that up. I needed to stop screen sharing. All right, so I'll start with cybersecurity. So you know, that's one of the big issues we've been talking about because it is a vulnerability and there are other communities that have had a cybersecurity attack. And so we've taken some steps to insulate our city to make sure that we are a little more prepared. So a couple of things. SIRSA, who is our insurance company, they offer a free program and we signed up for it. It's called Know Before You Know Before, and it's a program where cities can sign up and they will test your cybersecurity infrastructure for you. And so is, they will send free tests, fishing tests to your networks and see if there's any vulnerabilities. I.e., please don't click on the links if you don't know where the emails are coming from. Um, it's a, the vendor's called Know Before, and like I said, it's free service. And we talked with Dan, our, our IT person. He said it's great. It's a great service. So we're super happy to have just taken the time to sign up for that. Dan, our, our cybersecurity person, I want to thank him. He also completed our two thousand twenty-two nationwide cybersecurity review, NCSR, for the city of Leadville. We passed. This is important, and if Claire is still on, on Zoom, Claire Skeen, who's our OEM director for the county, she emphasizes it's a very important step to have checked off the list because you need to have this checked off to get federal grants. So once we've completed this for two thousand twenty-two, we will not be prevented on a cybersecurity basis for applying for federal grants. And I do want to thank Dan for doing that really quickly because that was something that Claire had identified it needed to be done right when she took office. And Dan was able to help us get that done by the end of two thousand twenty-two. And as you know, the city also is participating in a cybersecurity assessment. This was grant money through the state homeland security department. And the vendor who is doing it and has informed me that they have completed all interviews of staff. So all the department heads who are here, I want to say thank you for you and your staff responding to all the questions. Essentially, it's, it's called a crown jewels assessment. So the cybersecurity analysis is pretty in-depth. That what they, the analysis will give us is essentially where our crown jewels are and what failures would be catastrophic to the city. So how interconnected are we? There's not necessarily proprietary information in this, but they will identify, you know, you have one server that if it goes down, it brings everything down, that type of things. So we are expecting ideally the report by the end of the month. OHV, so we have our second reading of the OHV ordinance before us, the next council meeting. We haven't gotten any feedback from the businesses in town or anyone, and I did attend the mayor and I did attend the county's OHV work session last week where there was some attendance by locals, and I did seek out people after that meeting to see if they had any input on our ordinance. And it seems like our ordinance is well received. And there is, there was a, a presentation by the county about their potential issues regarding OHVs, as I think I've mentioned a couple of times. The county's issues regarding OHVs are a little bit different than ours. Ours are safety, traffic, and noise. The county's stressors regarding OHVs or off-highway vehicles is more related to land use. And so the county is proposing some changes to their own off-highway vehicle ordinance. So if you didn't get a chance to attend that meeting, I'll tell you, they're looking at a compliance model and an enforcement model. The compliance model would put some measures in ordinance that would offer more control for the county over OHVs and mayor, if I'm summarizing this incorrectly, let me know. The enforcement would just be a ban of OHVs on their county roads. So they're looking at two different models. That was a work session, so no decisions were made, but I thought if you didn't get a chance to attend that that their ordinance changes are a little, I'll just say a little more controversial than ours. But I think we, as a community, need to be looking at some of the stressors on our community. I think, like I said, ours are narrowly tailored towards traffic, traffic, safety, and noise. And so you'll see ours on second reading next council meeting. I wanted to give you, I'm glad that Nancy is here from Main Street. I wanted to give you an update on the parklet across the street. So a couple of things that are really exciting. We have a new contractor who's going to begin working again in a few weeks, depending on the weather. But the, that is great news, but the more fantastic news is that that money, as you recall, was a grant from Colorado Department of Transportation or CDOT. As you may recall, that was a CDOT-funded grant which expired on September twenty-ninth of last year, and that had a city match. So that purchase order for that grant money was closed out as of September twenty-ninth. The great, fabulous, fantastic news is CDOT has given us a new purchase order, in their words. Our words would be grant money. So CDOT has given us until January twenty-twenty-three to complete the project. And I'm sorry, the, the end of two thousand twenty-three, January, the end of January twenty, I'm sorry, yes, December two thousand twenty-three, you're right. The end of two thousand twenty-three to complete the project. So we have a whole year. Um, the better news is that CDOT gave us some additional money. So we have a bit of additional money to spend on that project, which we had a parklet construction team call last Wednesday, and there's a potential that that could result in some really fantastic landscaping for that project. So that is good news for us. We, we appreciate the fact that there have been delays because of materials and weather and availability of labor, I think, has been the biggest one. But this is what I'm gonna say to this. Sometimes bureaucracy doesn't work in your favor and sometimes it does. This time bureaucracy worked in our favor because when our purchase order closed out, we got, what was the amount of money that it closed? we got, what was the amount of money that it closed out on?
The old purchase order?
Yep.
So I think we we ended a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
No, but how much money in total was that purchase order?
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, a hundred and fifty thousand. And then um we have a new purchase order for.
An additional hundred and ten thousand.
On additional hundred and ten thousand. So if you're following the math here, that's all in my class. So that is bureaucracy working in our favor. Uh I wanted to say thank you, Nancy, for attending Main Street update. So as you all know, um Main Street, we um agreed, has found its new home back, new old home back with the city. Um we've had several productive meetings um with uh Main Street Board and um Nancy as well, who is uh executive director. The uh Main Street office has moved out of the um uh EDC Economic Development Corporation office. And now Main Street is located in the Tabor apartment, which is the building um behind the Tabor home. And uh Nancy is doing a great job of getting settled in. I want to thank the streets department for helping clean out that space. Um it is, it it actually is a fantastic space um for for office space. So um it was been, I want to thank Nancy for the transition. She's got office space set up. We need still some minor repairs and on the interior, but uh we will be having Nancy give department after this meeting, starting next month. We'll ask Nancy to give Main Street updates in the department reports so that she can update you on Main, what Main Street is doing. And I will be having meetings um with Nancy and the new uh director for uh Main Street, Katie Scott. She's the new elected um board chair, uh yeah, board president. I'm going to be meeting with them every two weeks just to kind of see how things are going and um have them keep me apprised. And um the last and uh other good news is Nancy has agreed to stay on as the programs uh director. She has facilitated a meeting with the um state Main Street program and we had a facilitation with them. Um I'm going to have a meeting with the state uh uh Main Street program facilitator, Melissa Antle, this week just to talk about our goals and and priorities and kind of finding out. And then there is a Main Street uh uh board retreat. What was the date? What's that? We decided on the twenty-sixth?
Uh February sixth and tomorrow is the Main Street board meeting.
Gotcha. Uh so lots of exciting stuff going on. Um a couple of other things that are exciting locally. Uh as you know, uh it may have followed in the news, um Eagle County uh as a their regional transportation authority measure passed. So why that's relevant for us is we're an adjacent community. So because that measure passed, uh they will be creating a regional transportation authority. And I've been in contact with their um director, Tanya Allen. And so they are gonna, at some point, once they've got the regional transportation authority up and running, we are in the loop on that. And so is Tim Bergman. Um they may in invite Leadville Lake County to be a part of the regional transportation authority. We did not have to make that decision when they established their regional transportation authority. That was something for their voters. Um but that's something that could be very interesting for us is to be a part of the regional transportation authority. Um the other thing that's in exciting and interesting about Eagle County and their transportation, um Eco Transit, Tanya is also working with Tanya Allen works with them. She has, um I've been in contact with her. They potentially may have some interest in uh Spruce Street House. So they came up uh and she and one of her folks came up and visited the Spruce Street House as potential housing for their um drivers. And uh they, at the time, were worried that they were going to lose the second bus that services Leadville because they might lose a driver. That didn't happen, uh but she has reached out since we've made uh the Spruce Street House multifamily. And what Eagle uh nor uh Eco Transit normally does is signs a master lease. And so they would be the tenant and we would work with them. And they have done this in many, many communities with good success. So the good news is it could house one of our drivers or potentially an a driver for a third bus. Um so that's kind of exciting. Other things, just because I know this report is a little bit longer than my usual ones, upcoming agendas, just um the January twenty-fourth work session. Um that is for the um historic preservation commission code amendments. Just want to clarify that this, even though it's a work session regarding historic preservation, there was a little confusion last time. This meeting will be at your regularly scheduled time. So this meeting will be a six P M. meeting for you all. It is a work session and but six, six P M. here. Um and then our February seventh meeting, just to give you a preview of a couple of things, the second reading of the OHV ordinance. And then the other thing we're going to have for your consideration is we should do this at the beginning of every year, an updated fee schedule. So uh we we look at the, we have a fee schedule rather than putting individual fees in our ordinances. I think last year you guys pulled that out and made it a fee schedule. So it's always good once a year to look at your fee schedule and make sure that all the fees are um up to date and reflective um of the cost it takes sometimes for us to provide services. And uh we will be circulating the fee schedule to the department heads to have them. And let us know. I know there are some departments have let me know that our fees are wildly out of uh out of sync with what they should be and what what other communities are and what we um should should be looking at for some things. So uh that is all that I can, that is all that's on my list. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, please.
My question's for Nancy. Um this additional funding that you're getting for the parkland is an over budget or is that money we can use to do that? It seems like we're becoming a city of murals and that might be a fun place to put an.
Yeah, that's a good question and I could answer that. Um so we actually, um we didn't spend the full hundred and fifty thousand, but to answer your question, we we would have eventually been over budget um on the project. Um a lot of that has to do with the cost of doing this since twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Um but this additional hundred and ten thousand will allow us to comfortably finish the rest of the project in addition to um some projects. So I know that um Adam from the Jersey panel um with the uh, I'm going to pack the the Colorado Trail, T V can trail. Um they got a grant to to do a really neat sign. So we're going to plug in between that project and then this potential art project. Um so we're working on numbers right now to kind of figure out what the the rest of the construction costs are going to be. So we have, we have some a few demands that we're really excited.
Yeah, so thank you. That's a great question. So we ask hope our contractor to get us a budget as to projected costs to see how much we'll have left over. So we will add to the list. Um potential mural because I I crossing my fingers, we will have money to do nicer things with that project, especially since it's literally like kind of a gateway right into town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh with that, C D A for any major requirements to do, and what you're using it for, or is it? You will be willing to monitor at this gate.
Oh, uh well, it it is earmarked for the parklet, so we couldn't spend it, take it and put it towards a different project. It has to go towards this parklet. But once we put the money, so let's say that we have funds and we want to put them a mural on it, we want to beef up the landscaping. We submit, all of our invoices need to be submitted to C D A and they they see all of that. So I also want to thank uh Donna, who is on this call. She has been the manager of the invoices for this and everything we've done on the parklet project has, on the first purchase order, has been submitted and C D A has approved and they've closed it out. So we're good to go for that first chunk of money and we'll do the same with the second chunk of money.
Okay, so it ha- it is specific. So we unfortunately can't use it for the C D A uh the C sign.
Fortunately, we don't need to because they got a grant to to cover that house. So we can dedicate those additional funds and some other kind of another project. Um it's a reimbursable grant.
I heard that. You don't need it to give it back. Any other questions for city administration? Okay, thank you very much. Do you have department reports? First, please, Paul.
Yeah, John, this is going to work. Uh it's past a couple of these busy visits, working on one in. Drop back on the on-hand staff and we can get away with all members. And meeting them one on one as well as writing along with the officers in different hours of the day to get a better. Um also getting access to that systems and then also introductions with Leadville, partner agencies such as uh Bay County SO, uh advocates of Lake County, the library, street department, fire department, Larry, the family, OEM and homeless coalition. And then just uh coming to speak as far as what's going on here, then looking forward to giving advice, recommendations to the city's most administrative. Any any questions? I can lose my freedom.
Any questions? We'll see if Dan can do as well.
Right.
Just say, thank you. No pressure.
Yeah. You have fifteen seconds.
Do you? Uh you have good news for us, so yeah.
Good evening. I I will keep brief. Um I was going to do an annual report with with Lori, but uh we'll we'll get to that probably next council. So uh just a a tech three and a tech one, they're about three quarters of the way finished. Uh I did send some pictures out. If you would like to see those in the progress, please just let me know. Send those out. Um I will try to get those to you as it progresses. Uh the other thing, station two, all the uh finishing touches are starting to happen. They're still saying, you know, there's obviously some delays. We're probably looking at um maybe end of February, first part of March. On that, uh the one last thing that I I'll share is that I'm working um with the county and the Office of Emergency Management and the Operations Chief on mitigation efforts. So we're starting to kick off the Lake County Forest Health Council. So uh we're going to start diving into C O B P P and and mitigation efforts here in Lake County. So and report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief David?
Max was ten on that there.
Thirty-seven seconds. Uh I do have a question. Uh you're talking about the the uh the wildfire task force and how much involvement right now is fire department going to commit to?
So our our sole goal right now is, as we're building out this council, is probably just going to be public outreach and education. And then we'll go further into that as we unravel the C W P P and the needs. If if we have the capacity, I'd like to be able to get out and do some trailer work with the community utilizing the air burner, those types of things. But we really need to try to find the capacity. But I'm going to be attached to that and and see what we can do.
Who's going to be that outreach?
So it'll be through, it'll be me and uh Chief Oil and Chief Akam. And then we'll bring in the engine companies when we can actually get a forum together. Okay, but uh Sarah Hamilton from the Conservation District, she has agreed to become the lead right now until we can find that position on the whom person on who's going to continue to uh lead the Forest Health Council.
Sounds great. Who's going to schedule up those community outreach?
Yeah, um I'm hoping Sarah in the meantime.
Okay, I was curious. All right, any other questions for Chief David?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was a record.
Okay, like that.
Uh next up, Street Park.
We do mine first, we told you that there is as soon as I'm done, I have to leave. So uh mostly this last month, we've been working on getting the street that we're getting involved mildly, cleaning up the sides and pretty much everything done as of today. So we're working on getting uh ready for the storms that will be coming in tonight. So we are ready for that. Uh we moved so much snow, we did a lot of ice breaking, a lot of uh snowpack breaking throughout the city. Uh the guys have learned how to use the equalization a little bit more efficiently to break the snowpack. So we've worked all over town to do that. That's why we've had so many snow miles. Uh had a couple of issues with the police department giving us some uh advice and we took care of those real quick. Uh other than that, we've been doing a bit of traction on X and L. We've been doing kind of work. We did the trees and the uh Santa Claus train off of the front of the building here now. So that uh we discussed the end of snowflakes up for sometime until we all decide that we want it to be pulled down and we just build at any time with everything else. Uh other than that, uh we're just getting ready for the snow and hopefully we're going to have enough snow for ski joint and preparing for all of the load loads and it's involved with that. So other than that, we got a little too. So we're ready to go.
Please, Jake.
Last winter, we talked about our street department working with the county to remove the snow. They had some special truck. Are are they working with the county?
I haven't met with Mike yet, but from my understanding from the guys is that uh they have the equipment to remove the snow off of the immunity field. And we just supply trucks to load it down and to haul it to the street. And they take care of everything else and they come back on Sunday and help them.
So you're helping them, but they're not helping you.
Oh, that has been the history. That's all.
Oh, that they have a truck that can load the snow into both, you know, once it's in piles, they have something that loaded up that's yours.
We have a loader.
Yeah, we have a loader for that.
Well, you you purchased that.
Oh, we do.
You would blow out that. Yeah.
Yeah, but we've got enough loaders and operators that uh we shouldn't have any problem with loading trucks. Uh we'll have four trucks and two loaders available if that's what we need to. I'll have to get with Mike when they find out exactly what they have available so we can coordinate that.
Yeah, so it has to align with each other.
Yes, he joined could be, you know, every year we worry about, we're going to get stoked with he joined because there's never, like March, I mean, first weekend of March, there's there's none around town. And we have to go go get it from either the pile of the community field.
Yeah, I was thinking earlier with uh yeah, what's it say? From uh ski joint.
Duffy.
Yeah.
Duffy.
Duffy. One call that should be wrong. Uh but Duffy, and he said he's got enough snow, he's got stuff stacked in places that he knows about. I'm not sure what you're talking about. He did mention something about scraping and bushes or something like that. I think he was joking. But you should, you've got enough time right now. We should be all.
Any other questions for Street Park? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night, good night.
Good night, thank you.
Animal shelter.
Good evening, everyone. Um so we have our quick stats, ten adoptions in December, five surrenders, twelve impounds, ten of those were from the county. One was an unclaimed stray and we had two holds. And we will have our end of the year report along with the other departments next time. And then we are going to have our open house Sunday, February twelfth from one to four. Um so we're working on getting that poster finalized in English and Spanish and then getting it out to multiple sources.
What's what's that open house going to be like?
Um we're going to have snacks. We're going to meet with members of the community. We're going to work on getting more volunteers into the shelter. Match, a matchmaker, because it's close to Valentine's Day for adoptable animals and people.
We have a show from one to four, is that right? Any questions for the animal shelter? Uh I would tell you that at morning call, so Dr. Jeff was there and he's still earnestly trying to get his new vet clinic built. And he said lots of lots of problems, but he said he's got a good contract now in uh for it. So I hope it goes well for him. I'm just pleased he hasn't given up yet. Any other questions for the animal shelter? All right, thank you very much. Uh we have the City Book of license report.
We have renewed business license applications and most of all the businesses in Leadville have already renewed their licenses for twenty twenty-three.
We have three new business license applications and most of all businesses in Leadville have already renewed their licenses for twenty twenty-three. Um we've had a few new interested parties in the front end rental licenses, but they are for new builds that aren't eligible for a front end rental license yet. Um so we have about two in process and so we have about six. For the year.
Um I was looking at a spreadsheet that Donna sent out showing people's. Fees that they've paid for the accommodations checks. What is our ability to? Get those taxes if they haven't paid them, are we gonna reuse them a license this coming year if they haven't paid their taxes for months?
See, I asked the same question, but I actually do until the end of the month. That was a snapshot, so it it.
I know, but some of them are actually from the third quarter.
That is, that is true, so she's been reaching out to those people, but you you're asking, you know, then what if they still don't?
Is there something?
Not sure.
So I'll tell you what what worked when we did, and we'll probably try this first, what worked with the short term um uh rental license was. When we got a list of people or we saw that people weren't complying, we did two different letters. And Sarah Day helped us with this when she was still with the city or assisting the cities. We did two different letters, one was, you know, please pay this, the second was, you know, we sent you this letter previously, can you please pay this? And um then when we got down to like literally a less than a handful of people who weren't compliant. Um we went and just posted a notice on their door, we had the CS, uh community service officers come post a notice and guess what? We got the last eight, some of them said, look, I'm not doing short term rental anymore, but everybody got in contact with us and we 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 cleared it up. So I think I will say um uh our deputy city clerk hasn't been doing the those. Um Donna has been, our finance director has been doing the accommodations um matters and I will just tell you. Uh Donna is the hardest working person in the city and she has just frankly not had the time with getting our budget and then our supplemental budget. To spend as much time on that, we are grateful that you all have approved some administrative help, because this is the kind of stuff that we can definitely use help with. Because what we found is when we see it after people, they were compliant with short term rentals, so we just need to employ the same tactics, we just need the time to do it.
I still wanna go down the rabbit hole, uh assuming that someone just refuses. Do we do, do we actually have something in place in code that would allow us to terminate their license and um revoke any possibility of them applying again? That seems like it could be.
I I I will, I will look into that and give you the answer back.
I'm pretty sure the actual G F for that.
Uh well, so the short term, well, that's a good question, I can pull that up as well, you're right, the condition of the short term rental application, right? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh we just have this next is just a building report from uh the county, going to the market by the way, there's no what. Um what the numbers look like during the day? Pretty good, which. Uh next up, planning department.
So I I'm gonna give this report, so um unfortunately, our planning director, Chipan Latance, is um he came down sick this evening. So he gave me his report and he headed home for the evening. So um just uh update, so processed applications. As you are all aware, eight oh nine spruce, the change of use conditional use permit um is passed and approved. Active applications, um the Community Justice Center Conditional Use Permit. It's a um minor plat and site plan is uh the current status is staff is reviewing that and I know Chapin is working very closely. With the um architects and the Community Justice Center folks on that. Um there is a new application for Eleventh Street Multiple Accessory Dwelling Units, it's scheduled for a work session. Before the Planning and Zoning Commission on February twenty-second and at this point is under staff review. Uh and then pending applications, you're probably aware of this, the um rail yards. Uh planned unit development, PUD, there's no additional update on that. We um are still working with the developer of rail yards to comply with the final um elements for the phase one. And so we are um going to make sure that gets completed before we. Process anything else. Um so. Actually, probably not gonna go on over all these, I I will, I think those are. Some of the key ones, um. There was one that I wanted to. Right here, um oh yeah, okay, yes. What, the one last one I wanted to to highlight was under other. So you, um there's a Leadville Seven subdivision. Uh so this is, as we received this from the county as an agency partner for requests for comments. So this is a proposed subdivision adjacent to city limits, um it's a hundred fifteen units, sixty-one single family and fifty-four duplex units, so just, that's a big, that's a biggie coming. Um up, it is east side.
Here in.
Yeah, so it's county, it's it's county property, but they sent it to us for comments as a referral agency, I mean, and obviously. Um staff is working on that right now, but I mean, we we would probably comment on um. Circulation, access, some of those impacts that would be from an an agency partner. But it is county, so it is a project that is before the county's uh planning and zoning commission, not ours.
Did you have another question there?
Did I hear that there was one uh on an application for, and I think I must have misheard. A multi accessory dwelling unit?
Uh no, no, um ADU. Accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where there's multiple ADUs?
Yeah, um this is Eleventh Street, this is a new one, so it's scheduled for a work session for our planning and zoning on February twenty-second. And I can ask Chapin to get you more information on that one if you would like.
So, but I guess, is that out to monthly ADs associated with it or? I I don't know, well.
It would have to, there would have to be a a involuntary dwelling.
So the primary client would be mine or testing going?
Or or multiple homes with on Eleventh Street with, I can have Chapin clarify that. So as you can see, the things are, um you know, we do have a number of big things going on, uh but I will say I'm grateful that we have a planning director who can juggle all this.
Uh other question regarding with pre applications, I call for a diva, well, you know, is that a? New project they're working on? Is uh? Related to trailer, is there, have they, kind of wanted to get a feel of?
Hmm, uh I can all have, I'll ask Chapin about that one, I do not have, uh this looks like new as far as I am aware as well, so.
I hadn't heard about that, maybe, you know, when they do that one trailer? Maybe has to do with putting it in a. Trailer that place, that's that's spec.
I I don't know, it's just doesn't hear solar carport, so I suspect that that is what their um pre application is for, is a solar carport, but I'll follow up.
Okay, any other questions for planning department? All right, thank you, uh next up, uh we have the sale tax comparisons, if we've all seen them, uh. There are lines of what we uh projected. Um.
Almost exactly what we projected, I think we projected one point five million dollars over projected revenue, so is.
So do we have a plan for the excess funds uh compared to what we had budgeted, like is there?
Well, we could, we budgeted a million, it's one point five into twenty twenty-three, so that's pretty aggressive. Uh now, if we level out, we're still rolling, you know, um but for the additional five hundred thousand, no.
Yeah, and I think. One of the things I wanted to be careful about and and county manager Tim Bergman and I have have talked about this as far as. Um you know, running city, running a county is, you know, we've seen sales tax numbers and and we're heavily dependent on sales tax numbers. And we wanna make sure we're insulated in case there's a recession, so for right now, I'd like to keep that five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars in reserve. Because if the uh the city, you know, many cities hit the pandemic. And they were already tight on money and we really don't wanna be in a position where we have built and we have to decimate. Um programs, funding, decimate employees, so I'd like to be a little cautious with that for now, just so that we can kinda see how. Twenty twenty-three starts to play out, uh there has been a lot of talk about a recession. And uh I don't wanna be in a position where we are. You know, denying our community, like so St. George's comes and asks for money and we have to basically say, no, I'd like to keep that money in hand for a while.
Sure, I guess, I just, do we have a good idea of what's sitting in there now?
Well, uh Department of Legislative Affairs recommends that you keep a two million dollar reserve. Um and which is what we're what we're at, so I I I have said this to the mayor and and I would like this for this time being is, I would love to see us almost have three million. Only because if we hit a really bad two years, um and we're not talking a small dip, we're we're talking, you know, recession again. I'd like to be able to sustain the city for long enough that we figure out a way to not have to cut employees. And you never, you know, so I don't think we're we're comfortable with our rainy day fund as far as the Department of Legislative Affairs, but I don't think it hurts to be a little above that. And at that point, we would only be about five hundred thousand dollars above that.
I would say I ran some numbers, uh we are sixty-seven percent sales tax. Uh you know, if we budgeted sixteen percent. There's a quarter of reference.
A percent of her.
Complete opposite uh of accounting really. Yes, hi Donna.
I just wanted to make the statement that we have received from Crystal, the the numbers for January. Um in January of two thousand twenty-two was two hundred and forty-four thousand and in the the statement we just got from her was two hundred and eighty-six. So we're already starting the year off better. Just a quick update.
I was, thank you, but it's not as dramatic a differential, which we expected it to start leveling out at some point, so. It's good news and also uh informative of of the fact that maybe it's not gonna continue skyrocketing year after year.
Yes, exactly.
But uh Donna, we always do appreciate you piping in the good news.
Thank you, yes, I like that.
Well, as long as you have a line, Donna, uh financials. Anything special to look at?
Um, well, I do have some more good news, so yay, um Tabor Opera House, Phase One. DOLA and the SAT grant are both paid in full, we've received the money for both of those grants, so it's done and over, closed. Um, that's great news.
And I just wanna thank Donna and uh Sarah Day for working on that over the holidays, uh to get, to make sure that was closed out before year end. So thank you both for doing all the reconciling while we were eating Frosted.
Yes, I I ate a few of those myself. Um, the only other thing I need to say is that um the county owes. Um, well, July, from July on for the animal shelter and the fire department, so. I did talk to them today and it looks like it's in the process, it's just that they are a little bit behind, so. It's good news that we will be getting that money at some point in time. And then the other thing is, is I still need to make some journal entries in here, so. But I really think that it's pretty close to um being accurate, but. It it's looking pretty good.
Any questions for Donna about the financials? Okay, in that case, it's time to pay the bills. Any questions about? The bills?
I I had a question and I actually meant to ask Caitlin, she was here. There was a posting on one of the Leadville Facebook pages that said a grateful pause and pay for all our. Animal food at the animal shelter, is that true?
I don't think that's true, uh I think that they contribute. Um uh especially like I was talk talking to the the proprietor of um Mountain Dogs. And what they do is anytime they they get food that that maybe it's a partial or something like people bring to them. They they give that to the animal shelter, they they can't sell it and so they give it to the animal shelter. But so I I don't agree.
Somebody I wanna trust that had posted on Facebook, it makes us look like we're old cheapos.
I think they've offered sometimes to help us out with food and we appreciate their partnership, they have been a fabulous partner for the city, but. I I I know our, I'll just, I'll just say, sometimes we, the animal shelter has tried to correct misinformation on Facebook. And it just ends up being an endless debate, so we've we've actually strategized about sometimes responding to, but we can, I can have. Actually, you know what I think I'll do is have Caitlin address it in one of the next council meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it is nice to have those nice uh cooperative agreements uh between the two pet stores in town. Uh and the animal shelter, it's just, you know, feels like that's a, that's a great relationship.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just don't wanna claim when they're paying everything.
Were you, were you listening?
He's already being in the hall.
Did you hear my question?
I didn't, I just heard the animal shelter.
Um, somebody puts it on Facebook, perhaps she saw that a grateful pause pays for all of our food at the animal shelter and I knew that wasn't true.
They they do sponsor it, but it's our bags of food, um and so for this year and they were giving bags of food in our pallets. Um so they, Jill did set that up, so that's been in previous uh city council meetings. Um moving forward, because of the distributor issues in the program, we get two free bags of dog food. And cat food, um and then we will be responsible for sourcing what food or additional bags of dog food. Okay.
Thank you.
We're grateful for your answer. No one got my phone, thank you. Actually, relax, I knew you probably got it.
Um positively.
Gonna hit the button. Starting from now.
Going to fun intention here for example. Oh, God. That's good.
Wait, what did he say?
He said. I'm glad we go with fun intention, keep that up.
This is what happens when we don't have, we are, right?
Okay, at this time, I will repay more than just me paying the bills. Fill those paid bills. Wait my last seconds. Any other discussion? All favorably say aye, aye, any opposed? Any expectations, great, let's pay those bills. At this time. Um, we have consideration for sponsorship for Lake County Forum Awards, but I apologize, I need to take a quick break.
Okay.
And I will be right back. Does that mean you take a quick break? You can, yes. I think we're ready to roll. Thank you uh for that. Uh, right now, uh, we have this uh. Uh, sponsorship. We we've actually done this many times in the past, but uh. I want to ensure that City Council is okay with sponsoring uh High School Musical. And at at the uh, he's asking for the title sponsor, which I, we've been title sponsor a number of times in the past. It's always kind of kind of nice to do that. Uh, he's asking for fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, I was gonna suggest maybe we give him two thousand. They, I mean, I don't know. Like I said, they struggle, but a lot of times they'll put all these musicals, the royalties. Are the most expensive part of putting these things on. They'll pay, like I think for beauty and pieces, five thousand dollars in royalties to even put that thing on, so. Uh, yes, please.
I have no problem with the two thousand. But um, it comes along with some free tickets. You need to donate those to like, to like kind of community fund or. It's worth it. It looks like we're lining our pockets.
Uh, we could ask to do that. He'll. He'll hand them off to us and then I can let City Council do whatever they want, if that's okay.
That agreeable with you guys?
I think we should give him away to community. And you too, Anna. I will add that these musicals that Scott puts on are. Top-notch and not like going to high school plays or like.
In that tiny issue dollars.
He is, but that's okay. It's still drivers off involved, but my younger one is the same, but it. To get the costumes. And to collaborate a live orchestra and added royalties and it's some expensive endeavor, so. I will fully support it. Sponsor any title sponsor level of two thousand.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're all okay with that, Dana? You okay with that? May well.
I am okay with that. I'm sorry, my mute button is really hard to find on my little phone.
Might might be best to do it by motion since it's.
Okay.
Uh, I would entertain to sponsor, do the time sponsor uh for Lake County High School Performing Arts. Uh, musical at two thousand dollars. Is that a motion? I guess it is. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any suggestions? Thank you. I will uh let Scott know. Uh, but uh, I think it's money well spent in our community. Uh, next up, we have the appointment of Barbara Dana uh to Leadville Housing Authority. Dan, would you like to? Dan Osborne.
Dan Osborne, and I am one of the directors for the Leadville Housing Authority. Uh, which you may know is actually the city's housing authority. Uh, it was created by Resolution Number One in nineteen eighty. And our primary uh role at this point is to continue to run uh the Mount Massive Manor. Uh, we have also been sort of updating our mission statement and would like to grow that role in the community. Um, but one of the big things that I really want to point out is. Barbara Dana, who is sitting next to me, was a twenty-two-year employee of Mount Massive Manor and was an incredible resource to not only the manor, but to our community. Uh, and she has retired from that position and we have uh. Pageoled, asked, harassed. Uh, Barb to come back and um sit on board um after her retirement and to come join us in that. So we can have that institutional knowledge and her insights as we move forward. Uh, and to that end, uh, in September, the board, that was our last meeting, we're meeting quarterly right now. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, the board made a recommendation to you to counsel uh to see uh Barb on that board. And I would just hope to ask uh if you would resolve to put Barb on our board for us.
Thank you, Barb. Can we hear from you?
Not a very good speaker, but yes, I worked for Mount Massive Manor, saw many changes there, helped with many changes. Um, I did a lot with the residents and for the residents when I was there, so I kind of know what their needs are, but they look forward to. I don't know what to do. They will have them still.
Right, thank you. Any questions for Barb? Is there any mayor of City Council who would have any problem with the appointment of Barb to uh the Leadville Housing Authority Board? Uh, then as mayor of Leadville, I hereby appoint you to the Leadville Housing Authority Board. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Your institutional knowledge is, you have to be amazing. Whether you like it or not.
Helping as long as I'm here to be secretary.
She become the conditions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Other meetings, Claire?
I have a question and I'm probably. First of all, I thought that there was a last week's. Where I mean. Uh, can you get a room meeting? I thought we had that. I thought we were going to try to get boroughs meeting like either at the same time City Council, when you don't have it. Or the force City Council or something where it's not another evening. Uh, of our week. Uh, that. Is there something we can get? What what's going on? Because I'd like to see a room meeting on the schedule if it is.
It is on the schedule.
This? Um, okay, maybe.
Well, not for February. Retrospect for January. It comes first Thursday every month.
Thursday. Yeah, so it's the second of February, at six o'clock. Um, first Thursday, six o'clock. So February fourteenth, yeah.
Then you, um, I guess the new person who's going to help run the rural meetings. Um, asking to wait until she has her final schedule.
Yeah, wait for what?
Uh, also the final schedule of meetings.
That is a final schedule.
Okay, that's not a convention, but yeah.
I guess in your most. Okay, anything else on the um plan? Okay. Here none. Uh, Mary-Lynn Ford, um, just got a couple things going on. Uh, two, we have, we we uh building three different entities uh for partnership and paving. Uh, this summer, um, two of them. Um, have either paid or agreed to pay the amounts that they will build. If everyone's Excel, we'll meet next on Thursday and I'll try, and that was a much smaller amount, it was twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, but uh, the um, the sanitation district was about a hundred eighty-four thousand. And then the um Parkville Water was uh forty-one thousand. These are all numbers, but. And so I've gone to both Parkville and Sanitation and thanked them. Um, and so we want to continue those partnerships into the future if we possibly can get more done by doing that. Uh, and then Excel, we'll see there. They, I don't think they they have, there's not the same partnership buying. Let's say, uh, with Excel, but I think I think it's gonna be fine, I know what you mean. Uh, museum, we had the the Mighty Museum requested uh uh to have have a look at House with the Eye because they're putting on, you know, um, on some displays. Uh, that they they would like to kind of include takes from Leadville. So we went to the House with the Eye and we talked with uh with Jordan. Who's the the um, what is it called? No, anyway, um, uh, for for the Mighty Museum, she puts on those places in Mighty Museum. And so uh, we we have talked to her about a couple things she would like to put on this globe. At the Mighty Museum, we have a form. Uh, both an in and an out form, uh, that's a a winding agreement. Uh, but anyway, I just thought it was an interesting thing to happen and it's going to be nice to kind of share some of the artifacts with with the community in a different way. And that's about it for me. Any council?
Uh, as you heard earlier, homelessness coalitions going forward, want to go a little bit more into, just so you guys get an idea of the schedule. We're hoping uh by the end of this month, we're all planned out. Um. And we have everything scheduled as to who's doing what or at this school we are getting approached to do what. Um, and that includes everything you could possibly think of related to homelessness and its possible solutions. At the crisis response level, at the prevention level, as well as the um, long-term solution level. Um, so all that should be planned out by the end of the month and presentable to uh the City Council if that seems of interest to us. Um, I think the idea is. Uh, hopefully we circuit the ball rolling on some of these faster, um, especially long-term. Uh, there's going to be a lot of collaboration with like Regional Housing Authority, for example, and other such things. So we look forward to collaborating with everyone. House coalitions going forward greatly. Uh, that will also include some collaborations, I imagine, with the regional. Um, Food Access Coalition meetings today, so I'll be heading over and I'll be able to give a better update on what's going on, at least what I'll catch for today's meeting. It's going on at the same time as the council.
Oh, okay.
So I'll be a bit late, but.
Oh, I'm 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 glad you were able to attend that. So um Mara invited me as well to that and I had. Let her know that we had a conflict, so thank you for attending that and be up for the city.
Excellent. Other council reports.
I have an update for you. So I was talking about. Last week and how I was maybe to attend her. Uh, I would say that last week was a little bit of a. Interestingly for me, uh, so I I did put in uh my. My uh. Uh, interest in serving as Saint Vincent's Southport and then about thirty seconds later, immediately extended that. Uh, not because of not my interest, but because of other opportunities that came up uh for me with my primary job. And so. Uh, first stop is, on twenty-fourth, I would be unable to attend our work session because of the part of a. Post-fire, post-fire resilience conference down in Denver. It's a part of the bipartisan infrastructure law. And it's uh to try to come up with uh. Uh, an agency-wide approach to post-fire resilience and restoration, which is. Each agency does a great job. By themselves, but these large types of fires are beyond the scope and scale of what we're used to. And so it's affecting not only multiple jurisdictions. It's also downstream effects include communities and a lot of rural communities and wire providers and anything else you can ever imagine. So. Uh, they're trying to figure out how to make it sort of a little bit more nimble with our response. So I'm able to be. There on the twenty-fourth and unable to attend at the moment. And secondarily, um. On the thirtieth of June, I'll be starting a temporary assignment to be available, Roosevelt, as the quick week to spring, you have. At the Springs. And so I will be, I'm going to be able to attend in-person Tuesday meetings, although. I will be able to attend on Zoom, but you will not see me probably for the next uh four, five months. Unless it's on a weekend, because uh I have to be down there for the first. Few days to be in-person, for us, we're not going to be a very effective uh line officer. So. I'll be back into my normal role uh at the end of May or beginning of May. I don't know if I can win over somewhere, right?
This is positive for you?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's good. Yeah, it's a good positive thing. To test my metal in our urban forest on a pretty busy district with a lot of recreation demands and. Almost this this year and everything else I can imagine. So luckily. I there's a really, really good team involved down there and all I really need to make sure I do is support. That amazing time and make sure this is continuing to do their good work. So. That's good luck with it, yeah.
Any other council reports? Anything for a statement?
No, I just hope to be there in person eventually, but it won't be next week. We'll be tuning in remotely again.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, thanks. We appreciate you making the effort.
And. So um, I also want to be here on the twenty-fourth. I'll be in Colorado Springs at a conference for the Colorado County Clerk. Association, learning how to be a clerk. And um. I forgot to mention February first at nine AM will be another OHV work session with the Board of Crime Commissioners.
Oh.
To consider the ordinance. Um, and for those of you who couldn't make the learning, uh, in thirty is the new chair, the vice chair. Mayor Lobb is going to stay on as the recording secretary. And Kayla is staying on as treasurer unless they change her assignments. Um, but for now, she will stay on as treasurer.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, I have an answer to one of the questions that came up during the meeting. Just let me know when would be appropriate to.
I think right now.
So with regard to the accommodations tax by statute, um, it is unlawful to not pay the lodging tax. And so it falls under, which I. Was tempted to say, but I learned to not just pontificate without checking. So um, it is under our general penalty, so it's unlawful. And it would be um, a violation of our general penalty, which is chapter one point two, and basically that's a two thousand six hundred and fifty dollar fine. Or by incarceration, not to exceed one year, probably.
They would be in the stomach to be the clerk?
Uh, well, I would have to double check on that. It is, um, yeah, it's, it would be a civil issue. Uh, well, I would have to double check on that. It is, um, yeah, it's, it would be a civil issue and unless we decide to. Go down the incarceration route. So, uh, which.
Isn't that?
Is in code. I'm gonna say just because you can do something doesn't mean you should, but, um, but at any rate, so just the answer is it is unlawful and we do, it is governed by our general penalty.
So there is appropriate measures.
So that next letter that goes out, they included reference to that.
Yeah, maybe the second, we'll reference the code.
And they don't give up, no?
Anyway, so I just that I circle back on.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you all very much. It is seven thirty-five and the city council's adjourned.